Pam and I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
...... for which stands, one nation under God indivisible, with no change unless it's wrong.
Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. Tonight I only have one short comment. Items 5.5 and 5.6 will be pulled from this evening's agenda. City Manager Chad Hubel.
Mayor and Council, I've asked Fire Chief Biddle to give an update per some of your requests about the city's preparedness in the event of a train derailment. And more importantly, just some of the training that we've gone over. So if it's okay, Mayor, I'd like the chief to come to the podium.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The East Palestine Ohio Fire was a tragic event. The FRA, the Federal Rail Administration, has not come out with an official report yet. It's very easy to get impressions watching clips of it on TV. I could almost guarantee there was more into it, especially with where they were, with what chemicals they were dealing with and their capabilities. There's two, three things that have kept me up over the last 10 years as Fire Chief. Train derailment in Winona is one of them. The rail served the city exceptionally well 150 years ago to establish the city of Winona. But we face devastating, devastating impact with a train derailment, having it run right through the middle of a sandbar with 26,000 people on it. It would be a devastating, devastating event. We, with me staying up at night, we've kind of really pushed the envelope over the last 10 years as far as capability. About a 30-year department has actually been out to Pueblo, Colorado. That's the National Training Derailment Center, where we've actually done live fire extinguishment and so forth. There's probably not another career department, combination department in the state that has every member certified in NIMS. And NIMS is the National Incident Management System. So all your firefighters are capable of operating within a command post setting for three, four, or five days per the federal government. And also with council approval just six months ago, we earmarked ERP funding for hazmat training, a hazmat tech course again. Normally throughout the life of a firefighter, you take one hazmat tech class for the city of Winona or any other department. And then refreshers are normally required throughout their career to keep that certification. What we've done, we, the last time we had a hazmat tech class was about seven years ago. And sadly, it's cheaper to bring that class to the Fire Department and give it to the entire staff than sending three, four people, new hires, out to get it. So what we've done, six and a half years ago, we had a hazmat tech class. And then with council's approval, ERP funding is earmarked for a class that starts in April. So that also entails chemical response on rail. So that'll be part of that section that's given for the next two months, April and May. So we are, we've run tabletop, and I just want to kind of elaborate on what I said. I didn't mean to scare anybody, but we've actually run tabletop exercises with train derailments and wind direction and everything else. It's a monumental task to have a train derailment in a certain section of the city with the wind blowing in a certain way and to have the capability of evacuating a quarter of the city by river. So we're really in a unique position. East Palestine had cornfields surrounding that city. They had no injuries, but they had the ability to escape in all sorts of different directions. We do not. One really unique thing that I think everyone that has been stuck by a train in the last couple of weeks have probably noticed, we have a speed limit for rail in the city of Winona. It's 30 miles per hour. I don't know if anybody's been stuck by a rail unit train or whatever going east or west, but they're going about 15 miles an hour right now. So CP Rails probably sent the word down that any municipality that we go through, the speed limit's dropped. So that's one bonus. And on a, just to comfort people, we are constantly thinking about derailments in the city of Winona Fire Department. We constantly work on it. So we'll continue to do our due diligence on it. So any questions?
Steve. Thank you very much. Those are critically important things to share with our community. Do you have any sense, or anybody here have any sense, generally what's being hauled through our, what are typically the hazard things that are coming through Winona?
Sure.
I don't even know what vinyl chloride is, don't want to know about it.
So we, I personally get an update from CP Rail on the top 10 chemicals that are hauled yearly. So within the department, we create incident action plans for those top 10 products every year. With the manifests that run through here, we have anywhere from chlorine gas to tomahawk missiles that run the rail, everything under the sun. It's almost impossible to prepare for every single, it is impossible to prepare for every incident that could happen. Life safety is probably the ultimate key for us. So we'll base whatever response we have within the city on life safety. If it's methyl ethyl death blowing down wind, we will do everything under the sun to stop that leak. Based on fires and capabilities of water supply, everything hinges on different, what we run into. You're never guaranteed to have the same type of fire, same type of leak, same type of. So it's kind of earmarked towards life safety. So we'll do everything under the sun based off life safety.
Pam.
Yes, a few years ago, this issue was prominent also for us in Winona. And I'm wondering what's been done since then regarding the brakes on the different cars? I mean, there was supposed to be some improvements in the kinds of brakes that they all had and also the kinds of tracks that they're running on. Have there been any infrastructure changes in our area that would?
We, I earmarked for our second rail improvements here shortly, which I'm sure will provide additional safety at intersections. We, the city of Winona played a significant role with our crude oil trains that were started about eight, nine years ago. I'd like to say the city of Winona played a significant role at the state level and at the federal level within Senator, or now Governor Walz, in getting the shields on front of unit trains. And when I talk unit trains, it's the 108 oil cars with an engine in a, those are unit trains. So stipulations were put in by the federal government to regulate some of the shielding that goes around that. But I'd like to think that the city of Winona played a significant part in that because we attended all the state meetings and it eventually made it up to the Senate, which ultimately has the regulatory ability to regulate safety issues with the railroad. Municipalities do not. I wish we had some part like fire prevention where we had the ability to do that, but we don't. Railroads are big animals and they're governed by basically the federal government, so.
So what can, are there any opportunities for Winona to play a part in making this whole system safer now?
Well, I know there's conversations at the federal level as far as brake sensors, infrared. I'm not sure what CP has planned, but typically we're reliant on what's passed by the federal government to regulate railroads. So I don't know if that helps, but it's not reassuring, but we're pretty much dependent upon what the federal government regulates.
Right, well, as a community that is particularly vulnerable to this, I'm.
Calls to Senator Klobuchar, our senators, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. George?
Chief, do we have all the equipment needed to fight these disasters? Or is there something that we need or?
No, I think in the world of risk management, it would be, I don't know if that'd be the best bang for the buck that we could do. I think the key for the Fire Department is making sure we have our contacts and knowing that we could call Burlington Northern down in La Crosse to get, you know, 6,000 gallons of foam. The people that we need to call is probably the best bang for the buck for us. We do need an initial, I mean, one way or another, we're going to be by ourselves for at least three, four hours. So to have the capability to provide some sort of life safety for three, four hours is essential. But, you know, I'd hate to gobble up, you know, 300 square feet at the fire station of 60,000 gallons of foam. I just don't know if that's the best bang for the buck.
Okay, thanks, George. Anybody else?
Thank you, Chief.
All right, appreciate the update.
Mayor and Council was also asked to provide a brief update on the Alternative Response Team. So just wanted to let the council, the community, know that the city is partnering with community agencies to discuss the broader topic of mental health in our community. The agencies have been meeting monthly. The city does not call the meetings nor set the agenda. However, we have actively requested the meetings take place. This group has been meeting primarily to discuss community data around mental health with the goal of recommending the allocation of funds to an initiative. The agencies that are meeting know that the city has one-time dollars and Winona County could have funding through the opioid settlements that could be used for mental health initiatives. Of course, we can't necessarily control how those dollars are allocated. However, the city has taken their allocation and given it to Winona County that is allowed through the state opioid settlement. The individuals represented at those meetings are Winona Health, Family and Children's Center, Hiawatha Valley Mental Health Center, Winona County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, the County Administrator, Health and Human Services from Winona County, Chief of Police, Sheriff, and myself. The city currently has one-time dollars in the amount of $180,000 that came through ARPA funds. Those ARPA funds are required to be committed by 12/31/24 and that those dollars be spent by 12/31/26. The council has already approved the commitment portion of that requirement by designating the $180,000 for mental health initiatives. The city council will need to allocate the $180,000 that needs to be spent through council action if it's given to a specific program, service, or initiative. Again, that action always happens in a public forum that would happen here at this council meeting. The group who holds these meetings is planning to have a public meeting to share the information and data gathered by all the agencies. The discussions regarding current services and gaps in the service to the community will be discussed. We don't have a firm date for that meeting, but the agencies involved agreed that we would likely be ready to present that data in late spring or early summer. This group has discussed at our last meeting perhaps a date in May or June. This group meets again on March 13th, next Monday, and I'll request a date be discussed again at that meeting. So likely what we'd like to do is have the data that's being compiled and presented to these agencies, presented both to the city council and the county board. So again, late spring, early summer, an update back to the council regarding the Alternative Response Team and more broadly, mental health initiatives for the community. That is all I have tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jim. I'll now ask the city clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Heima.
Here.
Christiansen.
Yeah.
Idan.
Here.
Borzekowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
For the remainder of this meeting, residents are only allowed to speak if they have a request before council, and I have recognized you to speak.
Under petitions requesting communications, item 3.1 is an application for online intoxicating liquor license for Mackenzie's at Westfield.
Would the council approve the licenses? We have a motion from Steve, a second from Pam. Any discussion?
Is anyone here from the new, from Lacy's or Mackenzie's?
No.
I'm for it, so.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.2 is a renewal liquor permit for Winona tour boat.
Would the council approve the permit?
Second.
Motion from Steve, second from George. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.3 is a massage therapy license for Crystal Ingstall.
Would the council approve the licenses?
Second that.
Motion from Steve, second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.4 is a request for a 5K, 10K by Bluff U Montessori School.
Would the council authorize the city manager and the city clerk to execute the agreement?
Second.
Motion from Steve, second from Pam. Any discussion? Would you like to say anything about the event? It's up to you. Don't have to, we can just bang it through, it's up to you. Absolutely, thank you. I have done it in the past, a 5K.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a senior citizen group?
We do. Because it's a run-walky bit, you don't have to worry about running the entire night.
There you go.
No, I'd be walking the whole way.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.5 is the farmer's market license agreement.
Move to execute the agreement. Second.
Motion from George, second from Steve. Any discussion?
We know how many, I just had a question just out of curiosity. How many years have they been doing it? It played, you know, trivia, but.
Long time.
I was just curious. Long time.
Mayor and Council, I don't know the exact date. It's been several years, obviously.
Yep, thanks.
Any other comments or questions?
I think it's 1887.
I don't think it was that long because one of the first years, one of the first years they recruited me to throw tomatoes at me. Roger Locker thought that would be fun.
Right.
Okay, nothing else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the CASA 32 maintenance agreement with Winona County.
Would the council adopt the resolution?
Second.
Motion from Steve, second from George. Any discussion? Steve.
Brian, help me understand. I read that something about cost sharing here. Where's that coming out of? I wasn't seeing dollars in the resolution. Help me understand.
This, huh? There is no cost share dollars at this point. Right now, the agreement's written to where if we mill and overlay it, city has to pay for half. If we seal code it, the city has to pay for all of it.
Possibly to be determined.
Possibly to be determined. This changes it where county pays for half of the seal code. So it's definitely in our favor.
Okay, this is probably going to happen next year.
We have different ones scheduled for this year.
Oh, okay, to be later this year.
No, no, it won't be this year. We have different roads scheduled for this year to be seal coded.
So this is an agreement setting. We'll figure out pricing and method, but it's an agreement that will probably implement on cost sharing for next year.
Correct.
Thank you.
None, no. Any other questions? No, thanks, Brian. All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 5.2 is a temporary work area easement for the East End Boat Harbor.
Would the council adopt the resolution?
Second.
Motion from Steve, a second from George. Any discussion? Pam?
I have a question, yes. It says here that the use of this area will allow the dredge sand to be placed as fill in the tech park development area. What is the tech park development area?
Where they'd actually place the sand is in Tech Park next to the veterinary clinic there, that open lot. More than likely, it would be used to help windcraft expand. But at this point, honestly, we don't even know if they're going to dredge and place this there. This is just a precursor to set it all up in case they have a sand available. Generally, we get about 40,000 to 50,000 yards and that's approximately what windcraft wants.
Okay.
It's very beneficial for city in this case, where the city's development.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Pam. George?
Brian, I know in the past we've talked about getting some assistance from the Corps as far as dredging the East End Boat Harbor. And also I thought if there was some agreement where they would pay for the blacktop surface because it is chewed up pretty bad. The actual ramp is okay, but the blacktop road going from the ramp almost to the exit out of the harbor is chewed up pretty good. It's not all from them, but a good portion of that is from them. Is there, is there any more talk about the dredging or repairing that road?
Well, the dredging. The dredging is a different pool of money that the Corps cannot access with their dredging funds. The dredging of boat harbors probably hasn't been funded in 15 to 20 years. So they cannot spend Corps money on dredging the East End Boat Harbor, even though it's their purview to do, they don't fund it. So we're pretty much out of luck on that one.
Okay.
As far as getting them to pay for pavement, I would say we probably got the same amount of chance. It's a good thought.
Where's John Howard? Get your negotiating with them.
Anybody, you got anything else? No, thank you, Brian. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 5.3 is the prairie restoration cost share.
Would the council authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute the agreement? Motion from Steve, a second from Pam. Any discussion? We do have John Howard here if anyone's got questions.
Is there anything he wants to say or?
Anything you want to say, John?
Yeah, I'd like to hear just a summary about where this is and what's going on, the big picture.
Mayor and Council, the prairie in question is if you go up past the radio towers and walk west, it's above, basically on that ridge line, one of the, one of the last, I shouldn't say last, but one of the largest prairie areas that's relatively tree-free. There's some trees, but it's in pretty good shape, all things considered. About four and a half acres, four and a quarter acres. It is adjacent to some private property. Possibility for restoration on that at a later point. The Fish and Wildlife Service is interested in working with that, with that landowner. And yeah, this is a piece that is required as part of our bluff traverse to do mitigation of the prairie area. So it's something that we need to do and the Fish and Wildlife Service is going to help us fund that as well as devise the management plan for this parcel.
So will we be burning that area or first of all, cutting down the trees that are in there, but then reseeding or burning? What's going to go on?
The first step will be removing any of the woody vegetation, followed by a burn probably in year two. It's likely our contractor wouldn't start until this fall. They like to work in the non-growing season, so they probably won't be able to work this spring. I think that shows up with the contract as one possibility. We'll probably do in the alternate piece. So likely clearing in the fall and possibly a burn maybe this time next year. And then probably we break the burn into a couple of different sections through that area.
Good, yeah, I like this idea, especially the remnant prairie. Very good, thank you.
Any other questions for John? No, thanks. Thanks, John, appreciate it. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 5.4 is the Minnesota Historical and Cultural Heritage Grant Application, Wyndham Park Historic District Design Guidelines.
Would the council authorize staff to apply for the grant? Motion from Steve, a second from Pam. Any discussion? We do have Luke Sims here if anyone has questions.
Luke, I know we were talking about it before, but could you just do a brief outline of the process from kind of grant to fruition?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Heima. The process for this will be an application to the Minnesota Historical Society who administers this grant program. Assuming that the grant funds are released to the city of Winona, we will work with the Heritage Preservation Commission to craft an RFP. That RFP will go out to up to a minimum of three qualified preservation consultants as qualified through the US Department of the Interior. After we collect proposals from those three different individuals, assuming they choose to draft proposals for the project, we will then select one to hold meetings with the members of the Wyndham Park Historic District and with the Heritage Preservation Commission and craft the unique guidelines to the Wyndham Park Historic District. This is a similar process to what has occurred for the East Second Street Commercial Historic District and the Winona Commercial Historic District in downtown. Wyndham Park is our newest historic district being locally designated in 2016 and on the national register in 2021. So these are just now due and an appropriate way for us to administer our historic districts.
And what are the basic parameters of the Wyndham Historic Park District?
When a property that's on a local register is going to make exterior alterations, this could be a new fence or alterations to pavement, changing the siding of a property or lighting or windows, that property has to go through what's called a certificate of appropriateness, commonly referred to as a COA. The COA process is a review by the Heritage Preservation Commission or its subcommittee to hear that application where they interpret the Department of Interior standards and apply those guidelines. And so having individual guidelines provides more context-sensitive development and redevelopment of properties in Winona.
Okay, and then just roughly an outline of the district, which streets border it?
I came prepared with maps in case I want to give it to you. From Wilson to Huff Street and from Sixth Street to Fifth Street. And I can go ahead and pass these over to Steve, Councilmember Young, for you to pass them out.
Thank you.
Steve, could I ask? We're having some guidance in writing these from some entities, three different entities. And so they will give us a draft proposal, we'll review them for appropriateness. What committees do they pass through? How does it, what's the final approval process look like?
That'll go through the Heritage Preservation Commission and then we'll bring them back for review to the city council as well.
Approximate timeline?
By the end of the year in 2023.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Luke? No? Thank you. Pass them out and then we'll take the vote. All good? Any more questions at all? Okay. Pam, good? Pam, you good? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And just a reminder that we have pulled items five point five and five point six. So we'll move on to item five point seven, which it's the Prairie Island Campground Operations and Management Agreement.
Would the council authorize a mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement?
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from George. We do have Jamie Shell here from Front Porch Management. If anyone has questions for him.
Does he have something for us or?
Yeah. We just had your annual review a little while ago.
Good job out there.
Yeah. I think. Any other questions or comments? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Jamie.
Next is council concerns.
Uh, we'll start with a council member, Boris Zkowsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would like to congratulate former Winona Senior High School Wrestling Coach Bill Schmidt and, uh, former Winona High Wrestler Joe Hoileman and on their election to the Region One Hall of Fame, Wrestling Hall of Fame. Two very good men, two very well-crafted men, and congratulations to both them on their appointment to that high honor. And also I'd like to just wish, uh, council rep, uh, Aaron Rapinski, a speedy recovery. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, George. Councilmember item? Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Young? Okay. Councilmember Heima?
Nothing this evening.
Very good. Councilmember Christensen?
Nothing tonight.
Not going to break the. Not going to say anything tonight? No?
I get another ten minutes.
I just thought somebody would throw something else out there. All right. Good. All done.
All right. Under consent agenda, there are five items. Uh, the approval of the February twenty-first minutes, the adoption of the My Energy Cooperative Electric Franchise and franchise fee schedule ordinances, a claim by the city of Winona, a claim against the city by Progressive Insurance on behalf of Bernard Puka, and a claim against the city by Alyssa the, Lovekey, Lovekey.
There you go.
Second.
Motion from Steve, second from George. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor being seven oh three, I move we adjourn.
Motion from George, second from Pam. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.